Like to call the planning commission for the city of Clear Lake meeting to order. Thank you for viewing tonight's special planning commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at the city of Clear Lake Chambers on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We are currently live streaming this meeting on the city's YouTube channel and the Lake County Peg livestream YouTube channel. To begin with, may I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Inglis?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Smalley?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Here. Okay, to those present, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And if Vice Chair Smalley would lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will adopt the agenda. City manager Flora, do we have any changes?
Yeah, we'd like to pull item number three.
Okay, all right, we will pull item number three. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with item number three pulled?
So moved.
A second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, the adopt, we have a agenda is adopted. At this time, we will go to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the planning commission on any matter that is not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the commission or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The commission cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note that comments for the public will be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any public comments in the chamber? Seeing none, madam, do we have any on Zoom?
There are no comments on Zoom.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to business. We will be swearing in our two new planning commissioners. If Derek Counts and Ray Silva could please come up to the podium. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And repeat after me. I, Derek Counts.
I, Derek Counts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of California.
And the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That, and that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I, Ray Silva.
I, Ray Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That, and that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I, Ray Silva.
I, Ray Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That, and that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I, Ray Silva.
I, Ray Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well, that I will well, that I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That, and that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I, Ray Silva.
I, Ray Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That, and that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I, Ray Silva.
I, Ray Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That, and that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I, Ray Silva.
I, Ray Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
And if you'll both be seated up here, please. Yes. Welcome.
Nice.
Thank you. All right. And we'd like to welcome you to the planning commission.
Thank you, guys.
All right, at this time, we will move on to our public hearing. Item number one, consideration of conditional use permit, CUP 2024-04, and the corresponding environmental filing categorical exemption, CE 2024-08, to allow live music events within an existing restaurant and bar, commonly known as self-made billiards and taqueria located at 14642 Lakeshore Boulevard, Unit A, Clear Lake, California, further described as assessor parcel number 04019405. Staff, may we please have the staff report?
So we'll just go ahead and start with a location. So this is located, the project site is located along Lakeshore Drive, which is one of the major collectors that goes through the city, goes up to downtown area like by Austin Park, and then Highlands Red Buck Park is just down to the south. It's the red dot there, as you can see. And then Emery Avenue is on the backside, and that is a collector also, but a minor collector, more of a neighborhood collector. The parcel is approximately points, the whole parcel, it is in, the actual project is located in Self-Made Center. So that whole parcel actually functions as one as in terms of parking. So just keep that in mind as we go through the process here, the presentation. The red dot is actually where the live music is proposed, and it's at the front part of the building. And that particular parcel is approximately point three acres. So. So this is just a blow up of the area. So actually quarter of an acre. So the parcel, actual parcel area where the live music will take place is on a lot that's approximately 10,000 square feet. The actual building is about 5,100 square feet. As I mentioned earlier, it's located in the South Lake Plaza, which is actually, if you see the dotted line on the screen there, that would be, you know, this area here, this whole thing would be the Self-Made Plaza. Zoning.
Like to call the Planning Commission for the City of Clear Lake meeting to order. Thank you for viewing tonight's special Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at the City of Clear Lake Chambers on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. We are currently live streaming this meeting on the city's YouTube channel and the Lake County Peg livestream YouTube channel. To begin with, may I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Inglis?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Smalley?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Here.
Okay, to those present, can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And if Vice Chair Smalley, you would lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will adopt the agenda. City Manager Flora, do we have any changes?
Yeah, we'd like to pull item number three.
Okay, all right, we will pull item number three. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with item number three pulled?
So moved.
A second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, the adopt, we have a agenda is adopted. At this time, we will go to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the Planning Commission on any matter that is not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the commission or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The commission cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on the next available agenda. Please note that comments for the public will be taken on each agenda item. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any public comments in the chamber? Seeing none, madam, do we have any on Zoom?
There are no comments on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will go to business. We will be swearing in our two new planning commissioners. If Derek Counts and Ray Silva could please come up to the podium?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And repeat after me. I, Derek Counts.
I, Derek Counts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of California.
And the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That, and that I will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I, Ray Silva.
I, Ray Silva.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will will, that I will well, that I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of California.
And the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion.
Or a purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And if you'll both be seated up here, please? Yes. Welcome.
Nice.
Thank you, all right. And we'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, guys.
All right, at this time, we will move on to our public hearing. Item number one, consideration of conditional use permit, CUP 2024-04, and the corresponding environmental filing categorical exemption, CE 2024-08, to allow live music events within an existing restaurant and bar, commonly known as self-made billiards and taqueria located at 14642 Lakeshore Boulevard, Unit A, Clear Lake, California, further described as assessor parcel number 04019405. Staff, may we please have the staff report?
So we'll just go ahead and start with a location. So this is located, the project site is located along Lakeshore Drive, which is one of the major collectors that goes through the city, goes up to downtown area like by Austin Park, and then Highlands, Red Buck Park is just down to the south. It's the red dot there, as you can see. And then Emery Avenue is on the backside, and that is a collector also, but a minor collector, more of a neighborhood collector. The parcel is approximately points, the whole parcel, it is in, the actual project is located in Self-Made Center. So that whole parcel actually functions as one as in terms of parking. So just keep that in mind as we go through the process here, the presentation. The red dot is actually where the live music is proposed, and it's at the front part of the building. And that particular parcel is approximately point three acres, so. So this is just a blow up of the area, so actually quarter of an acre. So the parcel, actual parcel area where the live music will take place is on a lot that's approximately 10,000 square feet. The actual building is about 5,100 square feet. As I mentioned earlier, it's located in the Self-Made Plaza, which is actually, if you see the dotted line on the screen there, that would be, you know, this area here, this whole thing would be the Self-Made Plaza. Zoning, so the area, actually the area that is the Self-Made Plaza is owned general commercial. The surrounding uses include medium density residential, which is to the northeast, and then also just across Lakeshore Drive, which is down at the bottom there, the main corridor is primarily mixed use and general commercial. So the business operation, currently it's operating as a restaurant and bar service. They also have a kind of billiard sports area. It's also their license for ABC Type 41, which is just beer and wine. ABC is, you know, alcoholic and beverage company of California. So they're proposing live music in addition to the current business operation, which will only operate out of Unit A. We'll see where that is in a moment here. They're proposing three times per year, Fridays, Saturdays, and holidays only. Operation would be 10:00 P. M. to 1:30 A. M., and they have contracted with Parks Security for the 2025 year for their events. This is some, some graphics that the applicant has provided to us. On the left, it's kind of a little blow up of the area of Self-Made Center. It's a little hard to see, but all the areas there in kind of that purplish blues are all the parking spaces. ABC, that's the main building that they're proposing the live music. So Unit A, Unit B, that will be part of the live music venue. That's right now currently where the restaurant, the billiards, and a dining area, which is solely dedicated to dining, which is Unit B, will be holding the, the live music. And C actually is a retail space. So that's really not part of the picture, but I just wanted to throw that in there so you can have a full picture of what that building is. On the right side there, there are additional retail structures or uses there. There's some salon, I believe, a salon, dog salon, and a small office on the backside up against Emery Avenue. So let's talk about parking on the Self-Made Plaza. So per municipal code, 18-20.090, parking space requirement for restaurants, bars, with or without dancing, you can assume if you're going to have dancing, you're going to have a band or some live music. So that's a given for this one. So one space for 60 square feet of dining space. One space for 100 square feet of kitchen, and then for commercial retail, up to 2,000 square feet, it's one space for 250. Anything over 2,000 up to 5,000 is eight spaces minimum required, or one for 3,000. I'm just going to zoom down to the bottom there. If you look, total required is 74. That's assuming that if everything is operating at one time. So we've got an overlap type of uses. So the live music is really proposed from 10:00 P. M. to 1:30 A. M. Most of the other retail shops will be closed typically early evening. So the restaurant, it will be operating during, during live music. They have to have food service to be in compliance with ABC. So all in all, they, they're total required at 74 onsite. They have approximately 45 that they can actually accommodate for parking. And these are just some site photographs. Top one is looking from Lakeshore Drive. The live music events and the restaurant and billiards are the building in the back on the left there. This is from Lakeshore Drive. So this would be the primary entrance we're proposing. On the back, oops, on the backside is Emery Avenue. They do have a gate there. They do, can do some parking there, approximately eight spaces. We recommended to them, there's a gate there, that they do not block the gate and that they put a sign up there, no parking in front of gate or something like that, so that, you know, in case of an emergency or fire or something, emergency vehicles can get back there and get that open. And we also are suggesting that only employees park back there and limit the exposure from the public on that road, Emery Avenue. Environmentally, it's exempt from CEQA because an existing structure and the applicant is not proposing any major changes to the structure itself. Conditions of approval. But typically, when we do conditions approval, there's some kind of boilerplate stuff we put in there with regards to agent, getting agency approvals, timelines on when the conditions of approval are, need to be in effect or acted upon by the applicant, and they usually expire within one year, I believe it is. But in this particular case, we have about three specific conditions we wanted to highlight. Trash enclosure plan, we're requiring the applicant to apply for a trash enclosure plan. They don't correctly, currently have that, and they, there's been some trash accumulation there that the city would like to get taken care of. So that is a requirement prior, prior to operation of the live music. It doesn't affect their restaurant at this point. They can still operate as a restaurant, but not the live music until this, these three items are taken care of, curb gutter and sidewalk. Per our code, any improvements over approximately $50,000, or if there's a discretionary approval that is required, would require curb gutter and sidewalk. And this, along Lakeshore Drive, this would be an in-lu fee. You're not required to install that, those improvements. Agency permits as may be required. We just, staff recently called, actually ABC, their license did expire on the 31st of March, but they do have 60 days to come into compliance, so they can still operate until June 30th. And that sums up the presentation. So you have three motions you can pick from. One, move to adopt resolution PC 202502, move to deny the resolution, or have staff continue with direction. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much. All right, I will bring it back to the commission for questions this time. Commissioner Inglis, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
I have a couple. Have there been any noise reports prior as a restaurant, billiard parlor from this? Maybe Chief?
Not as far as staff is aware. We haven't had any complaints of that.
If I could add something, yeah, we could have Chief Hobbs answer that specifically if you would like, but I think it is important to note that this is one request that was made initially, I don't know, maybe a couple of years ago, and we had some concerns about there being issues. And so we issued some temporary event permits for them to operate occasionally, and sort of as a trial period. And because there were determined to be no significant issues, and they wanted to do things more frequent than we thought we could approve on a temporary basis, that's why it came back to the, comes back to the commission, but no significant.
So they passed the trial. How about tequilas? We approved one, something similar last year. Have there been, how's that been? I mean, I haven't heard of anything negative, but I don't know.
I, I'm not, I'm not aware. I mean, that's, you know, not obviously something on the agenda tonight, but you know, we'd have to.
Well, I just meant because that was a similar situation, and you could extrapolate from that, that perhaps that, that this wouldn't be a good idea. But if there haven't been any, that would maybe, I don't know, I just thought it was relevant. Chief, any, anything on tequilas? That one's on.
Like the city manager said, on this one in particular, since they've been getting the permits and doing the events with security, our calls there have gone down drastically. We go there often when they're doing the events, just, just because, just to stop by. But calls since 2024, we've had less than five calls where we've actually responded to there for noise or arguments, things like that. In comparison, before they were doing the events with security, I mean, we would go to five in, you know, a couple of weeks. So big difference. As far as at the tequilas, I don't have specific numbers, but the last time I checked, it was very similar there. When they got the, the permits for the events they were doing, you know, regular, you know, a couple of times a month, and started getting security, things like that went down drastically, and there's been no major changes since they got the use permit.
Oh, great. So it worked. I have a couple of comments. At looking at the place, I saw residential nearby, but where they're planning on doing the music is as far away from the residence as it could possibly be on that property. And they're talking about two and a half average events per month. That's just, doesn't seem to be an overburden. And that's all the questions I have, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Silva, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Yes, he talked about the parking, and I was busy figuring out my computer here. These are two separate parcels, and should there be, or is there an agreement that I'm not seeing that would, that would prohibit the owner selling one of the parcels or the one that where the bar and restaurant isn't, and would take away some of the parking? Seems to me that that could be an issue. Should there be a merger, or should there be something as a condition that would prohibit that sale?
We, yeah, so staff did discuss that. At this time, we, we don't think it would be prudent to do a merger or, or require the applicant to do a merger. Typically, what would happen is if it's a more intense use such as live music or something or that, which requires more parking, at that point in time, it would be a use permit. And then at that point in time, we might, you know, as part of the condition, request that the applicant do a, or whoever he sells it to, do a merger.
Thank you. The other question I have is about the, about the sidewalk curb and gutter. Perhaps I should come in another time and talk how that all works, where the money is, I guess they're, they're putting up or a bond in, in order to fund the eventual Lakeshore Drive rehab?
Chair Williams, yeah. In this case, because we have, we are doing design on the project itself, there's actually a separate fund that the city's established, and so they are required to just pay the in-lu amount, which is a per foot fee that's been determined by our city engineer. So rather than do the construction, they pay that to the city, and then we put it in that separate fund. So when the construction is started, that will go to offset the city's costs for constructing that.
Thank you. Without getting in the bushes on, on all that, perhaps we'll have a conversation. I'd like to understand how that's going to work with people who aren't improving or developing. Anyways, I'll let, I'll let that go.
I just wanted to say something, just to clarify relative to the curb gutter and sidewalk and lufies, that will be only for the parcel.
Right.
Be the whole front, sure, just to clarify.
Right. And, I mean, Sushi Planner Taylor did a good job of describing kind of our recommendations on this. I mean, we have had other situations where the use required parking spaces on property that was owned by someone else. And in those cases, you know, we would require that there be some type of parking agreement in place when you have the same property. Now, that doesn't really work the same, but we think that with the retail use, and as he described, if a more intensive use comes back, they're going to have to go through the use permit process. And so that would be kind of our chance to, to deal with it at that time. It's also still what I would consider somewhat of a downtown area, and so, you know, some street parking may be required for, for some of these uses as well.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Inglis has another question.
Yeah, the, the 30 days per year, is that going to be prorated if it passes this year? Like, or can they do 30 over the next six months? If they are allowed 30 per year, essentially, will they prorate that if we start in the middle of the year, or will that be 30, the first year to get things rolling?
Yeah, no, that's 30 per year. So, I mean, I suppose at, at the discretion of the director, we could prorate that, you know?
Well, we can, or at the direction of the commission, you can do that as well.
It doesn't sound like something that they would take advantage of, but if you don't spell it out, perhaps that would be missed. So I'd like to maybe add that in.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Counts, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, I do. So going back to the 30 events per year, my question is, is there a chance that they can exceed 30, or do they have to request another additional use permit for that option? That's just my first question.
I'll answer that to best. Typically, when you change a use permit, a use permit is, you know, it is what it is, then you typically would come back. There may be just some discretion there that staff can change it, or Director of Planning, we'd have to look into that. We'll see that.
My other question is regarding parking. I'm familiar with the area and seen their live events sometimes. They can get really busy, where I have seen parking kind of exceed into the roadway. So is there a plan to, in, let's say, like if all the parking, proper parking spaces have been used, is there a plan to get people to not illegally park in the vicinity area? Like, is there another designated area where they're supposed to park to keep them in compliance?
At this time, there are no, that's a great question. There are no other agreements that, as far as staff is aware, that the applicant has with other property owners. I'm sure you could work something out with them and then come back to the city and do some sort of shared parking agreement. I, I believe that might be a possibility. Yeah, so that the city is aware that he's using other spaces, you know, off hours or whatever that might be. I'm not sure about the parking along Lakeshore, what the future, you know, proposal is for that, but I'm, I'm thinking that that's probably eventually going to have some parking along that corridor.
Yeah, I mean, the parking situation will change with that new design from what it is now, but I think, I mean, the commission could give specific direction in the conditions of the use permit, if you want, around this, but generally speaking, I would say that, you know, these requirements, I think, should give us a good framework moving forward. And then, you know, we have the discretion if there's issues to work with the property owner, or if, if, if they are continual issues that they can't resolve and, and don't comply with, you know, we could bring it back to the commission to revoke the, the permit. So, you know, it'd kind of be more of an enforcement basis, but if we start getting a number of complaints from the police department or whatever, that people are illegally parked, and there's issues, we would go back to the applicant, work with them, and try to come up with, with some plan to, to resolve the problems.
Understandable. I was just wondering about it, just by happening to see, driving by, so I'd ask.
Wouldn't security handle parking as well?
Potentially.
Thank you. All right, Vice Chair Smalley, do you have any questions for staff?
I only have a couple. So are these, all these parking spots are going to be newly created, or are they already existing?
These are existing.
They are existing?
Yeah, that was 288.
So. I just have concerns about the accessible parking spots being compliant with the.
The ADA.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well. Typically, in California, you use Chapter 11B, which is accessibility, not the federal ADA. So there's a difference there. But, yeah, that, that would be my only thing, is making sure that, you know, the accessible parking spots are compliant, so.
Well, we can definitely put that in the conditions of approval. Well, we can definitely, um, put that in the conditions of approval. As something that they, you know, do and make sure they are compliant with that. Yeah.
That was the only questions you had?
That's all.
Okay. All right. I, that's exactly, I know, same. Okay. Um, then at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Um, do we have anyone in the chambers that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have, do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are no questions or comments on Zoom.
And did we receive any emails or written comments? No. Okay. All right. Thank you. Then at this time, I will close the public comments on this item. I will now ask each commissioner if they have any further comments for deliberation on this item. Commissioner Ingles.
No further comments.
Commissioner Silva.
Uh, no, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to thank, um, the director and staff for, uh, a nice report, pretty comprehensive and inclusive. Uh, there's always gonna be issues and problems with anything, you know, whether it be parking or, uh, just all depends on what's going on. I hearken back to the days where there was little nightclub joints all the way up to strip and people usually figured it out where to park and, and, uh, and have a good time. And, and I'm actually looking forward to seeing live music again on Lake Shore Drive. And, uh, uh, hopefully it'll be the beginning of returning to the fun place it always was. Um, within reason.
Not too much.
Yeah. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Counts?
No further questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Smalley.
No further questions.
I have no further questions. I will take a motion for item number one on the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit CUP twenty twenty four dash four.
Thank you, Commissioner Smalley. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Silva. Uh, may I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Silva? Commissioner Counts?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingles?
Aye.
Vice Chair Smalley?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, uh, we will take our city manager, um, and staff reports at this time.
Um, I don't really know that I have too much to report unless the commission has any questions about projects.
All right, thanks. Uh, do any commissioners have anything to report at this time? Nope. Okay. Do, uh, any commissioners have a future agenda item request? Okay, seeing none. All right, thank you.
Chair Williams, real quick, um, the item number three, just to make sure all clear, there was, um, we try to do this annually, but also because we have a couple of new commissioners, the norms and procedures, um, administrative services director Swanson was prepared to give that report and is sick today. So we'll add it to the next agenda coming up.
Great, thank you. Okay. I'd like to thank everyone who took their time to attend and for submitting their comments and to those who are watching our meeting on Zoom. There being no further business of the Planning Commission, we are now adjourned at six thirty two on Tuesday, April twenty second, twenty twenty five.